In order, please stand for the pledged allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Think we're about seventeen hours from spring, so that's a good, good, uh, good thing. Feels like I got my new specs today. I can see. I can see, I don't have to. That's really cool for me. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufel.
Here.
Chris Oregan.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here. Joanne Shurkey.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Okay, we're all here in a common four. Like to make a motion to amend the agenda. We're going to add local government approval for Nada?
Nadia.
Nadia Pizzeria LLC is going to be number eleven under new business.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a, a motion for Bill's payable.
I'll make a motion for Bill's payable in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-four cents.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments? Anything, any public comments? Not yet? Okay.
The only one you get.
No public comments. Moving right along. Consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the special board meeting minutes of February twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, the board meeting of March fifth, two thousand and eighteen, and synapses, check reports, the code enforcement report. There is a cemetery cleanup publication that is going in the paper for April second, the week of April second, I believe, and a Semcoth fiftieth anniversary communication.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Everybody good with that? Do we need any discussion on anything? Don't think so. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Supervisors report. Sorry for the late heads up. Our, our county road tour is going to be tomorrow morning at nine, if anyone wants to ride around with us. And we're going to tour some of the roads and some of the projects that we already have planned going forward and some maybe potential new ones. We really do, actually, on this, we go around, look at a lot of culverts that we think need to be replacing and there's drain issues and everything. So are you going to go and make it or no?
No, I'm going to the workshop.
Okay, so nine, nine o'clock here.
Because they moved the date.
Right.
Yep.
And, uh, so, uh, another thing that we have to, or should entertain, I'll give a price. We do need to repave Lake Point right on the other side of the park between Taft and M twenty-nine. That road, we looked at it two years ago, that road, actually about three years ago, is actually too narrow. And they said they, they need, and it is if you drive it. And they, they need to widen it. And I said, okay, we'll just, you know, come this way a little bit, but for the road right away and all that stuff, they, the engineer said they have to go towards the houses. But three years ago, I talked to a few of them, like Tom Sulya lives right there, we're going to have to hack and whack his tree, and he was good with it. But, uh...
Some of them people are already on the road.
What's that?
Some of those houses are already, like, right on the road.
Well, that's, that's how it works, that's where the right of way is. So, uh, so it'll, it'll be more entailed than just a simple, you know, throwing a two inches of asphalt on top of it. But I remember right, it was about thirty-five thousand a couple of years ago, so...
Is it including tree removal?
Yeah. It's a whole job, so... But I'm going to talk to him and a few others, that, and a few other items tomorrow. And just so everybody knows, um, St. John's Drive is going to, is slated to be repaved. In fact, I, I got a check, we might actually got, received all the bids today. I, I haven't checked yet online. And, um, Anchor Bay Drive, we're going to replace the first, maybe the second bridge on Anchor Bay Drive. Marsh Road north of High is being repaved all the way to Chartier.
That's good.
And Swartout is being repaved from Starville to Morrow, I think it is, or...
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that's, that's, those are all slated.
Will that get us through that three-way intersection? Will that carry us all the way through there?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think I, I expressed to you guys, I, I, our, our project, we should, you know, try to get some money, matching money for our big project next year. Like this year, we're doing St. John's Drive, should either be Starville north of Holland or Fruit Road. I think those are our two worst right now. You know, we should do one or the other this year and whatever, when we don't do the following year. That's my own personal feeling. But we're going to go around, look at ditching and, uh, and, um, a lot of, you know, there's some cross culverts there. It's always a, a, a need.
On one fifty-four green there, there's some culverts that are plugged.
And that's, and dots, baby. So, but we'll, we'll talk about that.
County does the work, so...
Right. And there's some on, uh, some of the county primary roads, too, that need to be done. So just want to give everyone's a, a heads up.
Artie, would you be making any concessions to address the, uh, the culvert situation out in front of our building here?
Yeah, actually, uh...
That'd be one of your agenda items?
Yeah, and, and actually, we cleaned it out last year, and it, it seems to be working when we had all that rain.
Oh, that's good.
About a month ago, because the carpet store, they had always flooded out, and, and we, our parking lots here, we had a lot of rain about a month ago, and it was...
And snow melt and everything.
Yeah, and it was, it was great. So I, I think we might, it's already fixed. Yeah, that was a, a biggie last year. And I, I communicated to you guys, we, you know, we're meeting with MA MAF, the fire union, and we still got a couple outstanding issues we're trying to figure out. If not, we may have to go to arbitration, so we'll, we'll take that as it comes. Starting to work with other agencies, the other agencies we brought in last spring when we had the high water, you know, the freighter groups, the Coast Guard, the DNR, Corv engineers, et cetera. Right now, our water is about six to eight inches higher than it was last year. And it was high last year. And I, I was just watching the news, actually, before I came here and trying to figure out how to tie my tide. And they said, uh, the weather guy, they're saying the next three months is supposed to be wetter than normal. So give it what it's take. I think we're going to have higher water, and I'm telling people, you have to protect your own property. When it comes right down to it, you know, we're going to try to slow down the boats as best as we can, working with the county, getting some really large, um, no, you know, no wake signs or the two-hundred, six-hundred-foot rule. Trying to work with them for better enforcement. But, uh, and we got, uh, DNR approval for two buoys, no wake buoys in the middle channel. So all that's going to help out. But, you know, you still have to protect your own property. We do have sandbags available, if anyone wants sandbags, you can, uh... Do we have them at the fire hall or the water station? Or the wat... What's that?
We do have some.
Okay. But we'll make them available, and, um, you know, they're, they're basically free, so I'm just telling everybody...
Without sand.
What?
Without sand.
Without sand. I know. I got a call, they're not full. Or how am I going to put them all in the trunk? Well, you could put a hundred, two hundred in your trunk. Not when they're full. Okay. Anyhow. Yes, uh, I don't know, maybe, uh, the, uh, Pryors and, um, and back in the eighties when we had it real bad, and Lumberjack, they sold brackets that would fit on the caps where you could bolt, uh, two-by-twelves and go up twenty-four, splash pad twenty-four. I mean, those were great. I know, we use those. So maybe I'll give them a, put a bug in there here. Because I think we're going to need it this year, but like I said, we're going to do all we can on our end. But you got to protect your own property. Actually, been doing a lot of work on a DNR trust fund grant for, uh, the kayak launch. I've probably gotten over fifteen, sixteen, and really great letters of support from our senators, uh, the Harson Town Home Wars Association, to name a few. Lots of big-time support on that. And just Saturday, I was at, Chris, you were there and Cindy, but the DNR had an open house, and there were people there from far away as Waterford for it. And that's, half of them came up to me and was talking, hey, what, tell me about the Crispin and all this. I mean, there was a lot of excited people about it, for sure, so, um, so we're doing a lot of work on that. If anyone's interested, we do have some Elgnet Clay Community Foundation grant applications if you're a nonprofit looking for some grant money in our office. I think it's, uh, the cutoff for that is the twenty-third, but it's not really hard to fill out. Water department did finish tearing down the house on Point Trumbull this past week. I know we're going to do a little bit more cleanup once the weather breaks a little more, and I'm going to start, you know, with the driveway going back and everything, so... That's about it. Oh, I did want to mention, I was in the communication, the, um, Semcoth did send us this letter, and their fifty-year, they're, they've been in business now for fifty years. And they have a deal, or they have an exhibit at the Detroit Historical Museum, and it's going to be there until April eighth. I got to get down and take a look at it. And they're, um, they're kind of highlighting, uh, like, four or five communities and also the nineteen-sixty-eight Detroit Tigers. And one of the communities is Clay Township, believe it or not, and actually, they gave me a baseball card that looks like down the flats, you know? And, uh...
Nice, nice.
And they, they got a bunch of pictures of Clay Township and, uh, St. John's Marsh and, uh, down the flats, so that's kind of neat. We do live in a great place. And then, uh, in the graves or in the cemetery, please be advised, all winter decorations, artificial flowers, grave blankets, et cetera, will be removed beginning of the week of April second. So if you've got stuff there, you should remove it, if not, we'll do it for you. All right, that's all I have, thank you. Under unfinished business, we have, first name is Wendy Melgram, a post-stife, and I would like to make a motion to table that.
Support.
We have motion and support, any discussion? I did have a talk with her, and, uh, and we're all good with her, so just wanted to let everybody know. And, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, but not least, township vision, mission, and goals discussion. What I wanted to do is talk about ten, twelve minutes, and however far we get through...
Okay.
We'll shut it down and continue the next meeting. If that's okay, if that sounds like a good plan. And, um, basically, what I, I gave our board homework. We agreed upon all the vision statement, mission statement, and the goals of the township. And we have ten goals, and I wanted them to grade ourselves on how we're doing from one to five on each goal, and if we're getting better or worse or flat, staying the same. And just have a little discussion on, on how, how the board thinks we're doing, and if we need to point any, any resources in any particular way or another. I'm going to read them real quick, and then I'll, I'll open it up for the goal one. Goal one is to protect people and property. Goal two, maintain and enhance the township infrastructure. Three, preserve and enhance quality of life. Four, protect and enhance the natural environment. Five, improve economic vitality and development opportunities. Six, provide effective and essential support services by pursuing partnerships with other organizations. Seven, influence regional and state issues, issues and decisions. That was seven. Eight, encourage community involvement through boards, commissions, committees, stewardship programs, and volunteerism. Nine, preserve and enhance, and celebrate the historical elements of Clay Township. And ten, provide diverse, active, passive, and social recreational opportunities. So that being said, the first goal is to protect our people and properties. Does anyone want to open it up with a discussion? Or tell me how they think? Okay.
Let me start out by saying, on a grade of one to five, I have given this one a five. And for what it's worth, it's the only five on my paper today.
Okay.
Some of the reasons for my high grade and high marks, number one, I think we have an additional police presence, not only with our hiring techniques, but with our, uh, with the cruisers we've recently purchased, um, with the training, I like where that's going. Secondly, um, our St. Clair County Drug Task Force, right? We've got some inside scoop on that, I'm, I'm pleased with the direction that's heading. Third, I think we have improved communications with our nine-one-one dispatch center. Very pleased about that. I know that's controversial at maybe some of the other levels, at our level, it's, I think it's a blessing. Four, the addition of, um, our school liaison, which we'll hit on in a little longer, a little, little while longer. It's a big deal to me to protect people and property. I think that, that ranks up there real high on the list. And lastly, I just want to remind the public that it takes their input to make all this happen. You know, we're only so strong with board members and police presence, um, we, we need eyes and ears from the general public. So as long as we keep those lines of communication open, um, I'm comfortable with where we're at and where we're going.
Anybody else, or what did, uh, what did, what did you rate us, Sandy?
Uh, well, I put it at four, and I was kind of going in a different direction, although I am impressed with how well we've been working with organizations like the County Emergency Management. We got wins going that we're trying to ramp up, the introduction of Smart nine-one-one, those are all great things. Not to put a, a downer on the topic, but I guess I had a little more issue with the, maybe blight and some of those types of things that I think we need to focus a little bit more on.
Right.
But I didn't want to take that away from all those great things that you just said, because that's all true.
Okay. Chrissy?
I also gave us a four. I had the opportunity to have a training class at the county emergency. I had the opportunity to go to a training class at County Emergency Management, and I was really impressed with what we have set up there in case of an emergency.
Awesome, thanks. Mark?
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm with Chris on a five, especially with the, uh, new development of some of the things that the chief and police department, fire department are doing. I can't say enough about that and how we're progressing ahead.
Thank you.
I gave him a four-plus.
Okay.
And, uh, and the reason for that, I mean, I, I'm pleased with everything that's happening, but that's one area, police, fire, emergency management, and zoning ordinances that we have always got to stay proactive and looking to the future because of our society changing, constant, our community changing. So, but I'm not disappointed in what I see happening, and particularly with our zoning ordinances. The planning commission is, um, always kind of willing to make changes as we, you know, want to have higher houses or chickens or, you know, things of that nature. So I, I gave it a four-plus, and those were my reasons.
Cindy?
Well, I also gave it a four, and not to take away from any of the great things that anyone had said, but for the reason being of, um, the code enforcement and the blight, I do think they could use a little bit of work, absolutely. That, and there's always room for improvement.
Mm-hmm. Great. I gave it a four. I think our police department's hitting on all cylinders. We do have to do some work in our fire department. We have, uh, some old equipment that needs to be updated, our, uh, our trucks are old, and I'm probably going to put a plan together so we can do some replacement on that. I think it's, uh, needed badly. I'm encouraged, we're getting, uh, more personnel signing up, uh, in the fire department, and I think we're going to have a, I think next week, or next week, we're going to put the, uh, command staff in place, is that right, George? And I'm, I'm excited about that, so I, I see a lot of, uh, good things there. But our, we do need, um, better or more up-to-date equipment and resources on that. And I'd also say, yeah, you know, I, I, I put building in, in this category somewhat, too. And, uh, we, we definitely can, you know, do some tightening up on blight, and, uh, I know we're making a lot of changes on our zoning ordinance, I don't think we're quite there yet, but we're getting, we're getting close, so... All right. Number two, maintain and enhance township's infrastructure. Who wants to go first? Mr. Oregan, you seem pretty organized down there.
I, I gave this one a, a, a three and a half, if that's allowable.
Sure. Want to go three point eight? Want to go three point eight?
I, I'm going to stick firm on a three, and that's my final, it's a three point five. I, I like the direction that we're heading, um, you know, if we could get a few more of the county resources to just shore up some of our, our culverts, our, our, our right-aways, um, our roads. I want to stay, um, maybe proactive instead of reactive on that. And, um, uh, second issue that, that I think is going to become, um, and demand more of our attention is the high water issue. What you touched on in your report. So I think that's going to, our infrastructure stands to take a hit if we're not careful, especially in the island, um, the channel, the channel roads. We know what happened last year, all the water that come rushing over the roads and up into the people's front yards, and, and with six or eight inches more of water, if we don't get cooperation with the freighter companies, and boy, this could really turn into a, a real issue with, with foundations and, and roads and right-of-ways, so, um, I, I think it's a passing grade, a three-five. But there's room for improvement.
Okay. Sandy?
Uh, I gave it a four, again, uh, but I see us improving a lot in this area. First thing that came to mind was centered directly with the township, it's off itself with the new technology advancements we're doing with email and getting all that switched over, which will trickle down into the township as a whole. The more organized we are, the, the better our whole township will be.
Thank you. Chrissy?
Uh, I gave it a four. Water is near and dear to my heart, so I would like to see us moving forward with a new metering system sometime in the future.
Yep, alls that takes is money, but we've had discussions on that. Mark?
Yeah, I gave it a three, uh, for everyone else, what everyone else said, roads, drains, erosion, bridges, they all need work. I, out in the community, uh, selling homes and houses and listing and all that, and I see a lot of things out there that, uh, are questionable. So I think we're making a good step by, uh, doing that tour tomorrow, and I'll have some input then.
Okay, sounds good. Joanne?
I gave it a four minus, and the, um, the water department continually has to work on the, replacing, you know, the infrastructure. It's, we got a lot of old lines up and down M twenty-nine and out in the boonies, and so, and then there's still some places that even don't have city water. So I think that's a, they're doing a good job, but it's a continual, uh, improvement that we have to, you know, put our capital improvement into, so... And then as far as the roads, I think, um, that always is an ongoing thing, too, because they just get deteriorated because of the weather, the high water, whatever. But the, um, we do pretty good considering that we don't have a millage that supports it, you know?
That comes out of our operating fund.
And I think we, they're in pretty good shape, so, but it's an ongoing, constant observance of trying to keep them up.
Okay, thank you. Cindy?
Well, I was originally going to go the three point five, but I got swayed to three point eight.
No!
A three plus. No. Um, I'd go three point five, three point eight, only because we do have that, it's an ongoing issue where it's going to be hard to get ahead of it, um, but it's always on our radar, so, um, I bumped it up to the three point eight.
Thanks. I gave it a four-plus or four point two. Five. Far as our roads, we, we do have issues on roads, but you know what, comparatively speaking, it's a lot better than most places. And especially our gravel roads, we started dumping gravel on every gravel road every year, and that helps out a lot on that. As far as our water and sewer, you know, we, we're going to have, hopefully, it gets funded this next year, our saw grant's going to be looking at, at our whole sewer system, so that's, uh, but that's not really that old. And in fact, we were talking about with John today in my office, um, you know, soon as two, at the end of two thousand and nineteen, we're going to retire a lot of debt for the water plant, uh, if, um, rebuilding the water plant. At that time, I'd like to put out for bid and replace the water main along M twenty-nine. It goes from basically Nook Road down to Willow Corridor right by just before St. John's Drive. And at that same time, it makes sense, I'd like to put a second run, water run across the river to Harson's Island. That'll be, help that, uh, system out quite a bit, too. And, uh, because that's really the weak link on our, on our water, um, as far as it's, that's where all, most of our brakes are, and it would be who was to do that. So I, I think, I'm positive, because, yeah, we do have weaknesses, but they're, they're identified, and, um, um, you know, we kind of have a plan to, to take care of them. Just like, uh, our, as far as roads, you know, our, our weak bridge is Flamingo Bridge, and it's, I'm about ninety percent sure it will get funded next year, which means it will be built the end of nineteen or the beginning of twenty. And, uh, that's huge, and it won't cost as much. Like Merrill Street, it was, uh, almost a six-hundred-thousand-dollar project, it costs the township three thou, a little over three thousand bucks. So if we, we do it right and with the grants and everything, it's, it's inexpensive. You want to do one more? Keep, keep going?
One more.
Okay. Three, preserve and enhance the quality of life. Mr. O...
Are we allowed to use half grades again?
Yeah.
Even quarters.
So I'm, I'm going to go, um, I'm going to go with a three-five on this.
Okay.
I got a three-five going. So, and I, I'm, I'm going to give you a personal perspective, because that, that's, that's how I'm going to surmise my, my answer here.
Oh, yeah.
Air quality, water quality, um, hunting and fishing and recreational opportunities, that's really the way my agenda unfolds. Those are all things that are extremely important to me. Hunting and fishing opportunities are, are, we're preserving them, you know, we're, we're doing well there. But I feel like as a board member, maybe I have to do a little more in, in my term in office, and how do we expand on that? So there was talks of, uh, the St. John's project, the St. John's Marsh project.
Yep.
Right, maybe providing additional hunting... Right? Maybe providing additional hunting opportunities, recreational opportunities in that area. So maybe that's my calling. Maybe I could roll up my sleeves and jump in and help out with, get that off the ground. So if I did a little more, I feel like my grade might be a little higher. So maybe it's a little self-criticism. But again, those are things that are important to me.
Sandy?
Well, now I feel pressured to put point numbers, so we'll make mine a 4.2.
It would have been 4.5, but Chris let you down.
Yeah. I think all of us try and look for ways and opportunities to preserve what we have here. Like you say, all the time, we have how much waterways in our township, miles and miles, and the wildlife that comes with that. We always look to see how to preserve that. We put up our turtle crossing signs on the marsh. And we do our marsh cleanups. And with our new property on the island, I think Artie, you had mentioned there were how many different numbers of birds and things that we can look to protect. And I think that's always on the forefront of our minds. So I think we do pretty good, not to say there's not other opportunities we can take, like Chris was saying.
Okay, thank you, Chrissy.
I gave it a four. I think that our residents, and I know I myself enjoy the park a lot. I think it's beautiful. It's something to really be proud of and it's a good thing.
Good, thank you. Mark?
I have to give it a four. You know, we have to work in conjunction with the DNR, State of Michigan, to maintain the quality that we do have around here as far as the natural resources are concerned. You get at the other end of it, where of, and you know, preserving that type of life, obviously there's a lot more to be done. Over the years, we can't let it go off to the side. We got Dow Chemical up the water, up the waterway here, and no telling what can happen to that. And of course, we've got a main tributary here coming out of Lake Huron going into Lake St. Clair. If something happened to that, this whole community would go down. So we've got to be very cognizant and get all the support we can.
I don't, I don't think we can ever enhance our quality of life as much as we, that's very, very essential for this part of, this part of our community. I think we have to continually educate the children, the people that move in here, and having a quality of, quality parks, recreation trails. And our recreation, Cindy Babbage has done tremendous things to encourage a variety of things. And I think we have to just, it's an ongoing, continuous education. And the better we do, the more people will come here. And I gave it a four plus because we're just keep working on it, too.
I'm going to give that a four, mostly because I'm overly excited about Chris's enthusiasm. I think he's going to make quite a bit of a difference in that area. But I do have to agree with him. St. John's Marsh is a big opportunity for us, especially after seeing the DNR site over on the island over the weekend, what they've done with that whole refuge area. And I'd love to see that expand over here and do the same.
Thank you. I gave it a 4.25.
4.2.
Oh, yeah. You know, the quality of life, I mean, and I'm going back five years ago, and I don't want to brag or anything, but got in office, there was zero Parks and Rec. First thing, you know, we did is start music in the park, and huge success. And it just snowballed from there. You know, we're the angling sturgeon capital of the Great Lakes. You know, we, we did the Crisp and Drain Project. We have a couple in our township, a couple sturgeon reefs. You know, we did a lot of work with EPA and the GLRI. You know, this is, you know, three, three years ago. Our Parks and Rec, I mean, it's exploding with the programs that Cindy's doing and the different opportunities. I just met at four o'clock today in Marine City, and they came, they reached out to us. This is a startup company, well, they, I say startup, they've been around 10 years, but they want to expand called Simple Adventures. And they really want to hit it hard here with programs, educational programs, kayaking, waveboarding on the island and both on the mainland here. They said, you know, we want to do paddleboard yoga classes and stuff that's way out of our expertise. And I said, well, I've been trying to get someone to do yoga out on the pier, and they're all fired, they got me fired up. But I have to have some more discussions with them. It was four people, and they're highly motivated and everything else. I mean, it was a good meeting. And I mean, I could go on and on about this, but I gave it a, you know, like I say, a 4.2. We're not there, but I think we've improved a lot, and we have a lot, a lot more things to improve. And also, I know we touched on it later, but I give a lot of credit to the Historical Society. You know, they do a great job on the Log Cabin, working with us. And, you know, we're working better with County Parks and Rec and other, other groups. Michigan State Education Extension, they're coming out here and doing programs for us. The Tennis Association, they're doing free programs here. I think it's all good, you know, from kids to older people and everyone in between, so. All right, thank you. Good discussion, huh?
Discussion.
All right, so we'll continue this at another meeting. I don't want to bore everyone too much. On our new business, we have Police Designate a School Resource Officer. And I hear we're going to, it's not really a promotion, is it? It's a designation, it's a lateral move. We're going to name David Ferraro as our school resource. Do you want to stand up and, both of you?
Yeah, sure.
And say a few things and?
Well, I'm in here in substitute for the chief. He's basking in 85-degree weather today, so.
I hope he gets sunburnt.
Yeah. And I just want to say, you know, I've been here, today's going to be my 27th year, March 19th. And, you know, I want to thank the board, you guys do. I mean, you guys say thank you to us a lot, too, but you guys are doing a great job as well. And I want to thank you guys for having you guys around the ball and really enjoy the community and make sure the community's going in the right direction as well, too. So I want to give you that, so. And I know you guys are here to, you know, obviously approve Officer Dave Ferraro here for the liaison officer. He's a good selection. It's been a long time coming. We have a great relationship with the school. Even before, in light of the things that had happened, it's really exciting to know that, you know, Dave's going to be in there. He's a good candidate for it. He's, he's been selected. And I'm going to have him say a couple of words, and if you have some questions for him, go ahead and ask him, and I'll be here if you got some questions for me. I'll be here, too.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Dave?
Want to say thank you as well for taking the opportunity to assist us in getting, creating this program, getting it moving forward. It's an honor to be selected, to be into the school and working with the kids and working with Mr. Latos and all the teachers in the school. It's going to be a continuation of obviously some of the Alice training and things that we've been doing. Just looking forward to getting inside there and getting this program moving, getting it off and running, basically. We all got a lot of ideas as to where we're going to go with it, what we're going to do. And it's just going to take some time to just kind of get it all thrown out there and see how we can keep improving and keep moving forward. And thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. And thanks, Mr. Latos, Chief Coach, for selecting me as the liaison officer. I'm, like I said, very eager and excited to get in there and start moving forward and seeing what we can do.
Awesome. Be looking forward to it.
Just on behalf of Algonet Community Schools, I want to thank the Clay Township Board. And I can't tell you the importance, not only to the district, but the benefit for the kids, the peace of mind for the parents. We got the guy that we, we were hoping we'd get. Dave interacts wonderfully with the kids. You know, just Kevin and Mike, they have the guys out every day. I mean, this is before we had a liaison, before we even were talking about a liaison officer. These guys are in the schools every single day. They walk through the elementaries, they walk through the high schools. It really goes a long way. And I got to tell you, I've been here 26 years in Algonet Community Schools, and I've never felt like our relationship with Clay Township Police has been better. You know, even the way this hiring or this idea took place was just kind of a microcosm of how the relationship's been. I went to a meeting up at the county with Jeff Freeland and a bunch of superintendents, and I got in my car, and you know, you walk out of some of these meetings, and this was shortly after the Parkland shootings. And you know, you walk out of there and your mind's going a million miles an hour. And I grabbed my cellphone and I called Mike, Coach, and I said, Mike, I said, can we meet? I said, I got some things that are on my mind that I want to talk about right now. He said, what time are you going to be back? Him and Kevin came over an hour later, and we were sitting down talking. And I want you to know that the idea of the liaison officer was not a knee-jerk reaction based on anything that's taken place. It's something that we've thought about for years. We just, now the timing is, it's imperative that we do something right now, I think. We sat down, I walked out of that meeting, and I, you know, I'm in meetings, much like probably a lot of you, I'm in meetings all the time. And I walked out of that meeting, and I was just literally to the point where I said, Mike, I'm going to call my board today. I'll talk to every one of them. He said, I'm going right from here to talk to Artie, and we're going to, we're going to make this thing happen. And I got to tell you, the Algonax School Board, when I brought it up to them last Monday, and even before that, they couldn't be happier. Like I said, I just think it's a win-win for everyone. I appreciate everything this board's done and working with Kevin, working with Mike. And like I said, of course, with Dave, I just think the sky's the limit. And then when we start even talking about beyond just having an officer in the school, the things that they could do, the education they can provide, it just, you know, it really, it really make, I light up every time I talk about it because I think it's real special. Again, I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. I just want to reiterate too, yeah, it wasn't a knee-jerk reaction to what happened. I mean, I was, we had discussions with Chief Drake when he was here, and then again with my coach and stuff. But I think we got the momentum and the reasons to do it now. I'm going to tell the board, too, we will have a few setup costs. We're going to have to, they're providing an office, right? And, you know, we're going to have to put a, get a computer in there, probably a gun locker so he can lock his gun up. You know, a few things like that, that's, but like I say, I, like Al to follow up on him, the things that are, it's going to be fun. It's going to be fun, and it's going to be great for us. You know, some of the kids in there need mentors and scary. But no, it's all going to be positive, so. I guess I need a motion.
Well, I don't mind formally making a motion to approve the school resource officer as Officer Dave Ferraro.
I will support.
Any more discussion, or does anyone have any questions, or?
Well, you know, looking forward, I'm all for this, 110%. But a big obstacle I see is defining Officer Ferraro's job description and where he gets that from. So I think there's, there's a lot of work to be done yet.
We have that.
This is a wonderful step in the right direction. I'm excited about it. I fully support it. And I just want his job description crystal clear.
Yep.
His responsibilities.
That's already in the works. Obviously, I still report my, I'm still employed through this police department. Everything still runs through. I check in with these guys every day. And it's just going to be the day-to-day business. And like I said, there's going to be a lot of, it's going to be a great program. Like you said, kind of the mentorship, being able to be right in and out with everybody and interacting much more hands-on than what we get to right now. So it's just going to be, it's amazing.
Maybe I can address the fact that Mike and I have had a lot of conversations. Kevin's been involved in most of them as well. We understand that this first year, and because there's so many things that we want to do, it's going to be a little bit of a learning curve on both parts. I feel the partnership's strong right now to where, you know, we understand there's parameters, and they understand that, you know, there's parameters in the school. And I just feel like there's nothing that we can't work through at this point. We'll be able to get past that stuff. And I think we'll keep Dave plenty busy and.
Fantastic.
But yeah, like I said, in a positive way, so.
Are you going to be starting immediately, or is there a timing?
26th.
26th.
26th. Yep. Okay. Yeah, I definitely look forward to bits and pieces of the program as they come forward with updates. And I'm truly excited about it.
For sure, absolutely.
We did put together about two pages of policies and descriptions. I'll get, I'll get that to you guys.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be solidified, you know?
Wonderful.
Yep, absolutely.
We already, I'll get that to you guys.
Yeah, just so I can read it, but not for me, for him.
Right, oh, yeah, we have that.
Just to make his role crystal clear.
That's the first thing we started working on, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we didn't vote yet.
Could tell we vote.
Any more discussion?
I just want to say, Officer Ferraro, you, excuse me, you are a fortunate man to be able to work with all those young people. There's nothing greater than the satisfaction of working with kids. And so I know you'll do a good job, too.
I'm looking forward to it.
Well, I would like to say thank you for stepping up and wanting to do this because that's half the battle, is finding someone that has a passion for the kids and really want to be there. And as a, as a parent of a young kid in the school district, I am excited that my kid gets to start with that right away. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of hiring Officer Dave Ferraro as the school resource officer? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, and thank you. You can go home now if you want. All right, next, number two, we had someone from the youth emergency. This is from Jeff Freeland, the emergency management group at the county. They have a youth readiness council, never going to come and present to us, but he's got the flu. I got an email about an hour before. Okay. So I'm going to make a motion that we postpone this. Support? Got motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, number two is postponed. Okay, number three, and I learned this actually at some train. If someone donates, I think the limit is $500. If someone donates more than $500, we as a board, we have to accept it. And I said, that's weird, why, why do we have to do that? Well, you might get some groups donating money for issues or maybe something that you don't agree with or something. And, and so we actually as a board have to accept it. So I'd like, we, I'd like to, I'll make the motion that we accept the donation of the fire, to the fire department of $500 for the, actually, why don't you make it, Sandy?
I would like to make a motion.
So she's involved with this.
That we accept the donation to the fire department in the amount of $500 from Algonac Youth Football League slash Thumb Area Football.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support. And, and again, why did they do this? Because we're always there, all standing by?
Yep, the fire department comes out to all of our home games every year that we host, and they stay there all day and assist in any medical emergencies or injuries on the field.
Thousands and thousands of people.
Yeah, there's like 5,000 people there.
No, I know.
Thousands.
Yeah, it's big.
Busy, busy people.
It's big. All right, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, I'd like to accept a donation of $1,000 from Deerbrook Builders. He donated $1,000 to our Parks and Rec. We have a program, April 21st. It's a bike safety program where we got a whole, whole pro. Basically, anybody could bring a bike here, we're going to, you know, try to hit it with all the kids. But we have an anchor base cycle here. He's going to inspect, spend about 10, 15 minutes on each bike, tune them up, inspect it, give a safety check, brakes, the whole nine yards. And if it needs a little tweaking here or there or a small part, he's just going to do it. And then we're going to take them in the police, and they're going to see a safety DVD. Then we're going out. we're, we're going outside and doing a little obstacle course and teaching them the rules of the road and we got a couple other things planned out, I can't remember the punch card, they gotta get like five punches and, we had a cool name for it. And when they're all done, everyone gets a free helmet.
Wow.
A free helmet and we fit it to them and, and actually the cost of the helmet's about twenty-one hundred dollars, but Ron from Deer Book heard about it and he says, "This is awesome, I wanna give a thousand dollars towards it."
Terrific.
So, that's what that's for and I know we're looking for a sponsor for the, the rest of it, we may already have it, I haven't, I didn't talk to Cindy today, so, but I think it's a well worthwhile program and that's coming up, so. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from Deer Brook Builders in the amount of one thousand dollars for bike safety helmets.
Support, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, whoops, anyone oppose? Motion carries.
I thought Chrissy, you were gonna.
You want me?
Darn kids.
Okay, five, election equipment, you wanna take this one, Cindy?
Certainly. Well, most of you probably know that our election equipment was recently replaced by the state of Michigan. They replaced our ADA machines, however, there's one for each precinct polling location. They're touchscreens, so they're more aimed toward the generation of people that are used to using touchscreens on their phones and their tablets. I think they're going to be pretty popular and I think it's gonna cause a lot of confusion when I only have one touchscreen in a polling place of three different precincts and have to try and keep the ballots separated. So, the election commission did provide us with a grant that replaced the majority of our equipment, but we still have two machines that I would like to purchase that we do have budgeted for because our grant covered more than we had anticipated, so I would like to round out our precinct over at the high school and purchase the two additional machines. They're expected to last a minimum of ten years along with the rest of the election equipment and then that would be for a cost of seven thousand and thirty dollars. There's also eleven hundred dollars worth of additional equipment and that's just to get all of our ballots, privacy shields, boxes for the printers that we also have available and budgeted for. So, I am making a motion to, for the board to approve election equipment in the amount of seven thousand thirty dollars from line one oh one, two six two, seven sixty, eleven hundred ninety-eight dollars from line one oh one, two six two, nine hundred, it's a total of eight thousand one hundred thirty dollars and ninety-eight cents.
These are all gonna be, like I said, touchscreen machines?
There's a touchscreen, yep.
Yeah.
Support, I'll support.
We have motion and support, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, next we have a pump repair at the Zobel lift station. We kinda share this with IRA, what is it, ten or eleven percent where, seven percent? Yeah, okay, I know that was up for a little debate. Most of the flow going through that pump station is from IRA, but we do have a little bit and that's why we pay seven percent, we'll say flow. And the total bill was, what, seventeen thousand? And our share is twelve hundred and fourteen dollars and seven cents.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the pump repair for the Zobel lift station in the amount of one thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars and seven cents deriving from line Adam five nine zero dash nine two zero.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, seven, we have policy review, payment in lieu of health benefits. As everybody knows, health benefits are expensive and you wanna take this one?
I think, part of it is just clarifying our dental vision care, if you don't participate in our health benefits, then we don't offer the option of the dental and vision as a coverage from the township. So, if you want the app to go on the dental, you have to take the health benefits, which is pretty standard. There's always been a little confusion into there because it said eligible, so we just kinda clarified up that wording and it would take effect one-one of nineteen, which is our next benefit year. And then additionally, employees enrolling in township health benefits, we've also always done an in lieu of if they don't take our benefits of twenty-five hundred dollars. However, we have had a situation recently of employees that would enroll themselves and not a spouse or dependent children, although they could, which still offers us significant savings from enrolling their whole family. So, we are opting to add fifteen hundred dollars payable in lieu of a spouse or verified dependent children.
That's not fifteen per, that's total.
Total, yep.
Instead of twenty-five hundred.
Yes.
Right.
You'd still save the money because you're not paying the fee.
Oh, big times, big time saving money.
So, I will make a motion to approve the policy review of, in lieu of health benefits.
Support.
Support. A motion and support and to be clear, we're, we're making changes, small changes in vision care plan, dental, dental insurance.
Well, they're not really changes, they're just clarifications.
Clarifications, right. And, and then adding the fifteen hundred in lieu of. We have motion and support, any discussion?
Does that change affect any of the current contracts that are ongoing? If that's a current benefit that they're receiving that they won't receive?
No.
No, no. And that part of it won't start till one nineteen.
Yes.
And it doesn't really affect too many people, most people are on our plan, hopefully, yeah, so.
Do you have just a question on healthcare? As in some individual companies that if the spouse has their own coverage through employers, do you mandate that the spouse?
No.
You don't do that?
No, no. But, so we have, we have an effective date.
For the dental and optical clarification?
Yeah, one night at the end of the year. Is there a termination date? Or would it be subject to the shopping of, of a new plan?
Yeah, that's when our plan starts, is January first.
Okay, yeah, that's an annual commitment every year.
And, and how this works too, the fifteen hundred or the twenty-five hundred, we don't pay it till the, basically the end of the year, well, Thanksgiving. So, if someone leaves earlier.
Yep.
You know, they necessarily don't get it or the whole thing, I, if you pay it upfront, you know, that, then they leave.
Yep.
You know, we don't see, see the benefits on that.
So, in essence, are we, are you saying that we're gonna prorate this?
At that, or?
Not if they leave.
Not if they leave.
Not if they leave, okay.
Right, so, use it or lose it type thing.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion? Yeah, we do.
Support.
All in favor, any more discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, I'd like to recommend to reappoint Sandra Mandello for, to the Algonac Clay Library Board and her term is ending three-five of twenty-two.
Is that a motion, sir?
Al, that's a motion.
Support.
Okay. And as you see, she sent me an email requesting, she's been on that board for a while and does a good job. And we, we are getting new bylaws, I reported to them and everything and they're, they're fired up group, so, and we put a new person on at last meeting, so. We have motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. And next I'd also make a motion that I, I am recommending that we reappoint Judy Campbell to the Algonac Clay Library Board, term ending three-five of twenty-three.
Support.
We have motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we have resolution of, this is actually to purchase the vacant property and that we're trying to do this kayak launch in the Bikehead, Trailhead and as the grant kinda requires it, the County Parks and Rec also basically did the same resolution, they are gonna split our match that, that's required by us, that's great news. And, and they, it was nice too, because they are, there's incidental costs of buying the property, we have closing costs, prorated taxes, you know, we're gonna have to get an appraisal, which will be about thirty-five hundred bucks, that type, they're splitting those costs too. Lot of those costs, it's not guaranteed, can get, the DNR will, will actually refund this back after the closing, I mean, we'll put in to it, I didn't want to, I want, just in case they don't for some reason, that's why I have it being committed at fifteen thousand six hundred. Basically, it's for thirteen percent of the purchase price and County Parks and Rec is also gonna put in thirteen percent. I'm going for a seventy-four percent match because you can get up to seventy-five percent, but you get extra points if you go seventy-four percent, so. For, for about a thousand bucks, we're buying some, some grant points. Yeah, so, that's how it works.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion, like to make a motion that we approve resolution two zero one eight dash zero eight, a resolution to submit Clay Township's MNRTF grant application to acquire nine point zero acres of property on the Crispin Blue Way for development as a township park and river access site and commencement of park and recreational funds, or commitment of park and recreation funds.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Okay, last, we have resolution twenty eighteen-ten, local government approval of Nadia Pizza LLC. This is the old Zlates, they're moving and I think they, I'm not sure if they purchased or renting, but they're moving into where the Colony Party Store is, was and to move the liquor license in to our township and it's beer and wine, not liquor, I should say. They need us, the LLC requires us to pass a resolution.
I'll motion to approve the resolution two thousand eighteen-ten, local government approval for Nadia's Pizza.
Support.
Support. We have motion and support, any discussion?
They're only moving there until they rebuild, when they do the back, aren't they? Don't they say that?
Yep. All right, motion and support, roll call vote please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Oh, we're at, down at the bottom, board member comments? Cindy, you have any comments?
I do not. I appreciate that, but I do not tonight.
Okay, how about you, Joanne?
Well, I have two little items to report on that we originally did not have a planning ZBA, zoning board of appeals, meeting this week, but at the last minute, we have one, kind of a, because, for an interpretation of something in the ordinance that has to do with front yards and so we're meeting on Wednesday at four-thirty in the afternoon to make that interpretation and then tomorrow, three of us, four of us are planning to go down to the Wayne County Community College to a planning and zoning workshop from twelve to three, so that's why I can't go on the road.
On the road at night, oh, what time do you have to leave by?
Ten, takes two hours to get there.
You're just going down to Wayne Street.
Going down to, to.
Well, you wanna do the first hour?
No.
We'll get you back.
You don't have a flyer to Wayne Street?
No, there's three of us driving in one car, all from the island.
Okay, good.
And so, we're leaving from the island.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Well, we've been busy on the planning commission, approving some ordinances, the changes and such and one of them included the farm animals, also some rezoning properties on Harsus Island as well as on Pike Road, so you'll see that coming before the board here before too long and can't say any more than what I've already said earlier on the comments about our resources, so, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Cindy.
I would like to thank Mr. Latos for coming out and speaking about the, the new project that got going on with our police department and I personally invite you to come back and give us some updates on how it's going and I'm sure all of us would love to hear how it's all going.
You bet I'd be here, too.
Thank you.
It'd be great.
Chris?
The Algonac Sports Boosters has their annual banquet dinner down in Cedar Glen this Saturday. Doors open, I believe, at six PM, you can contact the Algonac AD, Mitch Landrum, I'm sure you could find you an extra couple tickets. And congratulations to Officer Farado and the entire board and the entire department heads and the police department for bringing this together, making this happen, Mr. Latos.
Happy spring, Clay Township, I'm ready for it.
Me too, I jokingly asked, are you done? I joke, I'm sorry, I, I jokingly asked John DeBoer, is the splash pad open yet? It could be if we needed it.
Yesterday it would've been.
Yeah, but we actually did talk about putting the turtle signs up because we're not gonna do muskrat signs, but same premise, they're starting to run around and get frisky and you see them along the dyke.
We should do muskrat signs.
I know, well, I thought about it. Want me to get a quote?
It's kinda, yeah, that's kinda brutal that we run over.
We do start with our muskets?
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, I'll get a quote.
Maybe blue muskets?
No.
Yeah.
We're pushing it, we're pushing it with M dot as it is, believe me.
You know, they actually have a barrier you can put up where along the dyke, keep the muskrats from going onto the road. It's kind of like into the water area, they can't get up. I saw that in China with, with these hairy crabs that they have over there, so they gotta keep them in the ponds, but anyways, it's a delicacy in China, okay, so, anyways.
We're not doing hairy crab signs.
No, no.
Drive the line.
But I, I was, I was thinking about those signs lately.
Yeah.
As I seen all the dead muskrats on the road.
Yeah.
Anyways.
I'm trying to think, I, you know, again, thank you for working with the school. I, Al, I really have to say, I mean, three, four years ago, we didn't have much of a relationship with the schools and, and now, I mean, you know, I'm in there quite a bit, we're, we're the police are and, and.
But it's, it's really nice and I, you know, especially at the, at the lower levels, you know, when they see someone like, you know, Dave comes into the school and, you know, he's not just popping in the front office, he walks the hall and then, you know, he'll pop in a classroom and, you know, the more comfortable those kids get with seeing him and talking to him, I think the more, when there's a situation, they're gonna, they're gonna feel comfortable talking to him and, you know, that's really the beauty of that little resource officer, it's not, you know, it's great security wise, it makes us feel better, but you know, the real benefit is interacting and working with the kids and, you know, hopefully, they feel comfortable enough to talk to him, if there's a situation, they'll approach him and that's, that's really what we're looking for.
Right, and I know we can't do it right away, but maybe in the spring or start next year or the following year, we'll entertain maybe starting a cadet program or something.
That'd be great.
We've talked about that.
Yep, yep.
That'd be great.
Yep, yep, so, uh, uh, 'cause, you know, truthfully, it's hard for us to find, uh, first responders, both police and fire, and we can get, get some people interested, it helps us out too, so, um, yeah, you know, I, I can't be more happier, I mean, things are.
It's all good.
Well, it's positive, I mean, we, I'm not gonna lie, we, we have, um, I'm not gonna, well, yeah, we have problems, there are opportunities to, to fix things, and, uh, and we're working on it, but, uh, yeah, it's, um, it's getting there. All right, next meeting is April second, here, entertain a last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Support, okay. I'm not even gonna ask you if anyone opposes. Thank you for coming, everybody.